Are you ready? There you are. Okay, it is 5:35. This is a special meeting on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. This is also a remote session with Zoom. It's a public meeting being recorded on cable podcast and accessible on YouTube.
Patrick Darnett here.
Paul Pacheco here. The United States of America. We're going to be talking about what we should say in this information on the government and universal liberty and justice law. Stacy, would you like to pop?
Sure. Hi, Kim.
How are you?
Everyone that says Kim.
What's up?
Someone that says Kim.
Kim.
Yeah, she's first.
I'm over there next. Right there. On the bar. Make a motion to discuss. Oh, we have to turn that.
You don't open the hearing?
You have to read the public hearing notice.
What's that?
You have to read the public hearing notice.
A hearing that will take place to consider residential general application for people who live at 1560 Pine Street, Dayton, Mass. In order to follow by law. General residential hack of a question of four or more dogs that are home kept under the same ownership. A personal use of the German may be allowed in a residential business district as a matter of right. The location proposed kennel has a maximum lot size of 35,000. If the lot size is less than 35,000, a public hearing is required with all help. This also includes a personal kennel defined as Massachusetts general law 1.0 section 361, 36A. This panel will be held. This panel will be heard by the board as a protest against the 5:30 at 11:00. Okay, any questions? So how many dogs you?
I have four. I haven't made any one, but I have four.
I wish I could pull it for the one dog.
Yeah.
Um, okay, no more. Okay.
Just for the record, I just wanted the record to show that the home in question is less than 35,000 cubic feet, uh, square feet, I'm sorry. Which is why the public hearing was required. So the way the new regulation is written, those at home is that if you have more than 35,000 square feet, you're not in the public hearing, you will be asked right. If your property is less than, that's why you're here. So the board has the right to set conditions based on the number of dogs or.
No, I just want to everybody. If you go forward with it. Anyone want to comment on it or any concerns, questions?
No, no others are here? I'm just seeing the motion.
Alright, so I make a motion to approve this kennel application for four dogs for the residents at 1560, 1560 Pine Street, Dayton, Mass.
Second vote.
Aye.
Aye. Your vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay, what do you have to do?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay. So the, we sign at the end and then tomorrow?
Uh, then it goes to Mark Pacheco, he's the one who issues the kennels.
Okay.
She can take it tomorrow. She wants to.
You want to say the question about each of them?
Come back tomorrow. I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay. Stacy, do you have anything else?
Besides the regulations, yeah. Wherever it is in the agenda is fine.
Fine.
Okay. All right, so the, um, inspector reports. Town nurse.
Hi.
Hello.
So I have a couple of things. Um, I'm going to start off just with the public health excellence grant. Um, I know that Mike can reach out to you guys and that we're going to look if you'll allow us to come next meeting to talk on it a little bit more.
Yeah, I got the email, I'm already through.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention the fact that, um, we have BNE strategies. Um, this is who the towns had selected to be our shared service coordinator. Um, so we're actually going to start brainstorming what kind of services we're looking for for each town. Um, as like a pool type thing that we would be pulling out of. Um, another update on that was due to the results of all the towns on capacity assessments. We became eligible for additional funding. So, um, an estimated 200,000 added to our total for FY '24. Um, so that was just seen from what our capacity came back seeing the need that we had and that we got that additional funding. Um, healing community study, I have a lot to report on that. We have an upcoming visit from the National Institute of Drug Abuse. Um, they're actually going to come out and they're going to come and see all the things that we started to implement. So according to them, this is very exciting. Um, I'm not really in that industry, so I don't know that National Institute of Drug Abuse is exciting, but apparently it is. Um, cause, so that's going to happen on Monday. Um, they're going to come out, I'm going to go over down to the farm and get to meet everyone. Um, that should be a good time. Um, we're going to have an open house for Luke's Light that's in Berkeley. Um, that's one of the drop-in centers and then soon an open house for the Reverend Center as well. And I believe he is, he's Freetown maybe. I think he's Freetown. Um, we attended our first event, the Touch a Truck, I got to see Paul. Um, we had a huge success. Uh, we gave out seven Narcan's and we also had, um, some people that were interested in putting the boxes in. So that was great. Um, and we're working on having a Narcan training for residents in town. It's going to be May 22nd. It's going to be at Old Town Hall and it's going to be at 5:30 to 6:00. So then we'll be posting more of that on Facebook once I get, um, the graphics for that from the community study. Lastly, I created an information program for residents on ticks and tick-borne illness. Um, I'll be presenting that on June 12th at Old Town Hall at 5:30. Um, I am just waiting to create something so I can put it out on social media. Um, and then the COA is adding it to a much strawberry vine so that people can know. That's all I have.
Jim, I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, the first item, the grant.
Yes.
You mentioned $200,000.
Mm-hmm.
Is that designated just for the town, don't you?
No, because all these fundings are for collectively. So now we're at a little over 500,000 for FY '24. That's an estimate, I can't, I don't know exactly sure.
Okay.
I mean, then the, the shared coordinator, um, that we chose was a little bit more on the pricey side. I don't have the numbers for that, but they are an actual organization. Instead, our, the other person we had to choose from was one person, um, who already had a bunch of towns they were working for. And this is actually an organization that this is what they do. So, um, they have a lot of people to choose with. If we don't like who they give to us as their, as our touch point, you can find somebody else within that organization.
That's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Bill, commission?
Yep, I don't have anything for tonight.
No?
Nope, I'll keep my input with the rest of the agenda, but I don't have anything specific. But thank you.
Stacy, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Todd?
Uh, just want to report that it's pretty slow. Um, so I'm getting chopping away at the pile that's kind of on the desk and doing that kind of stuff. It's just not a lot going on at the moment, so. But otherwise, I've got some other stuff, correspondence when we get to that, but.
Okay. All right, all this, the home's regulation on hearings.
All right, so did everyone get the hot dog approved? Have you come up with?
Yes, I did, I did.
We'll look at it tomorrow.
So, and as a control, it's a new thing. So as an ag commission, we have, um, put out some regulations that we would endorse. They're not tight, but they're not real loose either. Um, because of some complaints, what, sorry, those chicken complaints, but we need to have them for all animals. We had somebody have cow over on Bailey Street in a little pen. And there are no set guidelines through the state or federal that says you need to have this and this to raise a cow or this and this to raise a horse. So we put together something that we think is not objectionable, but yet gives us some guidelines. So I can go out and if I need to cite them or whatever, I have something to stand on. I mean, through all of them, and I do need to get that bylaw number, I meant to do that today about the swine. We do have a bylaw that was passed in 1974 that says we as a town do not support pigeries. You only can have three pigs on your property unless they're under a certain amount of age because a sow is, um, kind of big. Uh, but besides that, you only cannot.
And that's on the property, not per person?
That's on the property, not per person.
I always thought it was two.
No, that's three, it says three.
No, I never saw it anywhere. And I grew up, that's what I was told, everyone said, well, you have two.
Yeah, great, but anyways, uh, we don't have very many people that want to be pig farmers in town. Um, poultry is a big issue in town. Cattle, not so much. Um, we have a few cattle farms. But not, I mean, we, we do have overcrowding at one of them, but that's, it's our big thing in town. Sheep and goats, we have a couple of people that have sheep, we have a couple of people that have goats. Uh, but we want to make sure that we have something in writing. And as I said, we can make all the suggestions and regulations we want, but the board has to approve them. And make them as regulations.
So we need to approve any recommendations that, and then it has to go to three meetings, is that the way it's?
Yes. You have to do, I mean, we can change them however you want to change them. As I said, they're pretty simple and pretty, you know, we don't want to upset people because we are a right-to-farm community, but there has to be some kind of regulations. Because we can't have people moving into town, well, it's right to farm, so I'm going to have 10 cows on my acre lot. You know, we can't do that.
I mean, I'm okay with what, what you suggested. I mean, you see the people, you're out in the field more, you, you understand your work 100% more than I do about this. Um, so I'm okay with taking their recommendations and making an approval, Jim.
I just have a question, just for clarity. Um, I, I agree, I think it's well-written. In each one of these though, it says that they shall be in enclosed area or the property shall be enclosed. Um, who's the fighting that and then who's the enforcement authority over that considering they're going to help us to go approve this?
The shelters or the fencing, I guess is the question.
Well, the shelters would be here.
Correct.
The fencing is what I'm concerned about. All my question is.
Well, okay, I guess my, I don't know, to be honest, but where does fencing fall under in the town, I guess is.
Well, there's no permit requirements for fencing, I'm going to address that at the select room, so.
Okay.
Just haven't done that yet. So that's my question is if we require fencing and there's no permit required, like, how are we going to make sure that this is enforced? Is it going to be through the board of health, through its, uh, respective agents? Is it going to be animal control? Is it going to be a client with my department? That's, that's all I'm looking for.
I don't know, I think we still need to figure out what, what we're going to, Jim.
I would recommend, if you, I think it's a viable question. I would recommend maybe tabling until we get an answer to that, unless anyone has a suggestion tonight to make that could clarify that. No, so.
Go ahead.
No, if you can table, we can do it again. Until we come up with a, a, a solution that we all agree upon.
Okay.
But you need this regulation.
I need some of these regulations as soon as possible, or we're going to have to have to record this in town.
Would it be appropriate to approve with further discussion on who has enforcement authority or I'm not sure. I don't, I don't want to hold up the end.
Well, my concern is we do this and say it takes a month. We get that all straightened out and then we still have to read it for three second consecutive times, so that brings us out four months.
Man, I'd like to get this, this moving, we talked about it back in February, March-ish. I'd like to get this going because there was issues about it from what I understand. Um, I mean, fencing would have to fall under, like, so what you're saying is what the recommended fence would be for?
Well, well, if someone, if someone has animals that are wandering about the neighborhood, we have this in writing. But what are we actually telling them to do and who's going to be the enforcement authority over that?
But I personally, I think it should be animal inspector because we've had, we'll say a cow that is being surrounded by pallets as a fence and they get out, the pallets weren't adequate. Um, but did they need a permit for the pallets? No. Um, but I think the animal inspector should have the ability to make them do more fencing. We've had goats that climb right over a fence because they put a shelter too close to it. So they're all a little different and I think they need to be treated individually.
Right. I mean, I envision snow fencing, but some, which, you know, we know isn't going to contain very much.
Right.
So that's, that's my concern. And I know that one of the biggest complaints that come into the health department regarding free-range animals is them getting out into adjoining properties or into the neighborhood.
Right, so, but if we, where it's written now that says that, uh, it's recommended that like all free-range poultry are required to stay in the boundaries of the residential property. It wouldn't matter if it's snow fence, chain link, you know, pallets, whatever. If it fails, then the enforcement says you need to build a bigger fence. You need to, it's your responsibility to build some kind of containment to keep your chickens in your yard. Instead of saying, you know, chickens will get snow fence and cattle will get electric fence, however it goes. I mean, leaving it up to the homeowner, if, if the animals keep getting out, it's their responsibility to find another way to keep them in. Would be my understanding of the way it's written now.
And what kind of actions will be taken?
Well, it would be non-criminal dispositions that would help.
Are you, all fees and everything except?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, because if we wait to define fencing with the board of select, then it's going to take probably longer than four months.
Well, because this is a regulation, we can put something in place and then we can change it during the process of the hearings or we can change it a year from now without having to go to a town meeting or anything like that, so.
Yeah, because we can amend things once we're, they're put in place. Yeah, I mean, I, I, what I, I don't feel it's, I feel it's adequate enough for now to say that it's, it's your responsibility as a resident and you are strict to the boundaries of keeping that animal on your property. Depends on how it is. Well, I, I'd at least like to get moving with this and then we'll go from, um, we'll amend it if we have to or down the road, we'll fix it.
Sure. Todd?
Um, I, I think there should be a limit on the number of goats on a certain space of land. I'm not saying one per acre, but 40 on an eighth of an acre is too many.
Correct. And this is our problem as an ag commission. How do you decide that when there's no federal or a state law that says you only can have 15 goats on an acre property? Yes, I think sometimes it's, um, case by case. Because I know horses, I know three horses in our town does not, I got five or six horses on a property and they don't have an acre per horse. But those horses are old or have laminitis or something else and they don't move very much. So their walkouts are very adequate for them. So it's hard to put in words exactly, well, it's okay for this one, it's not okay for this one. So that's why I said, you know, pasture is one acre per animal, but the animal inspector or animal control officer can change that in how we hold it. So I think goats is another one that we could just, you know, yes, on Bedford Street on that postage stamp? No, there shouldn't have been as many goats as there was there. We mixed that and you just moved them, but, um, so.
Could the de-language in here that says if, you know, conditions are whatever, that a limit can be placed or something that gives some.
Well, yes, I can always place a limit on any animal.
I was going to suggest that to your point, if I believe the animal inspector has that authority already in the other statute.
Well, that was only because unsanitary, it wasn't unsanitary.
No, it's not.
Not healthy, I mean, that's what they were.
Because I know I can go out and if I go to the bar or something and they, it could be, you could eat off the floor. But if they have too many animals there, I can say to them, listen. Sometimes I say, okay, if you, if something happens to one of these animals, you can't get another or you need to downsize. I haven't had to do that in town, but, um, you, I can do that by state law.
Vote. Okay, any further questions?
No. Uh, make the motion to accept the recommendations of the regulations on animals of fourth and animal control officer.
I'll second. Vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Right, so we have to turn these into the form of a regulations so that we can then post them in the newspaper and get them on their agenda and all the rest of it.
Okay, they have to on the newspaper? Yeah. All right.
I want to, um.
Yeah, um, we can go out of order. Or make a motion to go out of order. I can make a motion, yeah, move out, to go out of order, um, to discuss the pop squash waiver for pool usage. I'm second, interesting as hell, how it is.
Yeah. That's fine, I'm used to it, there's a lot of these.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, good evening, Chris Andrade, um, one of the members of Pop Squash Pool Club. Um, we're here to request a waiver for, um, flow rate for a public pool of what is set forth by national law. Um, currently, national law with our size, we're required 90, 98 feet per minute of flow rate. Um, currently, we're the pool.
Actually, 90 feet or 90 gallons?
98. There's pressure, but maybe it is gallons. 98 gallon, yeah, yeah, sorry, 98 gallon, yeah, per minute, uh, for turnover rate. Um, currently, we're operating at about 70% of that and have been. Um, but over the course of the history of pop squash, um, the design of that flow rate is for a load of 52, 52 bathers at any given moment. Um, pop squash is, I don't know if you've seen it, it's not 52 people, there are not even 52 members. Um, and so over the course of the past few years, we've come into the waiver to request that we are, we, we operate with 70% below, um, the state guideline, given that we're going to operate with 30% less of a total bather. So instead of the 52, we're limiting ourselves to only 33 bathers, um, at a given moment. Um, typically, it's only like maybe 10 at the most. Um, so we operate well below that even. Um, and over the course of the, the years it's been running, um, I don't know, Todd's been here for a few years. I don't think we've ever had an issue where the pool looks, um, too dark and the algae buildup. Um, we maintain it pretty well. Um, Rich Gunther is our certified pool operator. Um, he's, he's there probably every day. Um, or a member is checking the, the, the levels of the chemicals each day. Um, and we do it probably three to four times and throughout the day, uh, keep a logbook. Um, and if we have a steam problem, we're ahead of it, so.
So this flow rate was set, uh, measured by actual pool?
Yeah, so we have, one, we have, uh, on our, um, we have the, the pump with the PSI that shows the flow rate. And, uh, we had a certified company come out, they replaced all our lines last year. Um, you got the same flow rate, um, I think Todd's been there and seen the flow rate that we have. Um, it's usually around like 60 to 70, um, instead of the 98.
Uh, you said that you asked for a waiver of the year.
Yeah, so we've, so we had, we have intent to, um, replace the pump, which is the biggest aspect of why the rates were below what it should be. Um, last year, we replaced every single line, um, that goes to the pool, um, increasing it from like an inch and a quarter to, I think it was like two and a half inches, um, to try to increase the amount of flow that's going through. Um, that helped a little bit. Um, really, it's the pump, but COVID kind of diminished our availability for funds. And so, um, we're trying to pull in more members. Um, and the, the eventual goal is to hopefully in a year or two, have enough funds to replace the pump itself, uh, which will solve the issue.
My question is, is there spending the money to increase the size of a pipe to get more flow? Because you've got a pump that's failed.
Yeah.
Why didn't you?
Uh, the pipes we, we got for, for cost, like, it was like so cheap. I think it only cost us like $50 to get the pipe made.
How much is it the pump decreased over the years?
Uh, we've had, no, we decreased, we, one of the guys, he's maintained the pump. We changed out the sand on the filter, which is one of the reasons the fat will drop, um, the filter just like, because it's not enough flow to the, the sand. Um, kind of like built up inside, but so we do a bath wash a couple of times throughout the season. Um, and last year, we replaced all the sand within the filter. Um, so that will help us to last another couple of years. Um, and then, so trying to maintain as best we can, doing it the cheapest we can at the time. Um, would have loved to replace the pump last year, uh, just didn't have the funds for it.
Ms. L, you were sitting on the board last year.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any comments?
No, I need to, it sounds like you do try to fix the, the piping you said and, I mean, you did make a good improvement.
I understand, thank you.
Um, so it does show that you're doing what you can with what you have, right?
Yeah. But, uh, again, increase the size of the pipe. If the pump's the problem and all through the sand, it's not really matter how big a pipe you put.
Right, and it was, it was like one step of, of the process. So in the future, so we want a bigger pump, part of that is also it's going to have a bigger adapter. So when you go from a one and a half to the two, our idea is to have a variable flow rate one so that we're not overloading it and it's not too little. Um, and part of that, we got, suggested that to start, when, well, we were going to need to replace the line, the plumbing lines in the first place. So, uh, do that as like the low hanging fruit that was accessible, um, and a much cheaper than, like avenue than replacing the pump at all, right?
What's the price of the pump?
Uh, we were getting quoted like 2,200, which, it's not a lot, but when you're operating the.
But you've got a pool guy that's working with you, right?
Yeah, yeah, so we, we know him, he, he, but it's, he's still going to get it. So he'll, he'll replace it for us, but it's more so that buying the actual pump is the problem.
You plan to have a fix next year?
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully we can get a lot more people to come in and join. Uh, we've cut word out and the goal is to get more, but it's like, we're playing that game of we're trying to keep membership lower because of the pump rate is low. Um, so we need to increase the number of members and if we can get a few more, I think, how many does you have? Um, last year, I think we had, um, 15 families. So we were like right at, we were, you could probably stand to get another, um, 10. So the, the goal is to get somewhere in the range of 2025.
No, I, I was a pool operator certified years ago, so I, I understand the flow rates and op rates and. I mean, if they're not having the, if they're not having the maximum of people in there, as long as the levels are okay and they're checked regularly and. Todd, you've inspected in the past and there hasn't been any issues with it?
Um, yeah, it was one day that it was a little cloudy, but they corrected it the next day. Um, I think they just need to add some chlorine to it. But, um, in general, it's been, but they were closed for two years to COVID too.
Yeah.
So, um, it was two years that it wasn't used.
Yeah.
Yeah, rainy day can make it cloudy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it, honestly. I'm, I'm fine with approving the.
Do you have a recommendation of?
Well.
How many people?
Um, I have a couple of questions first. Are you replacing the building? I know it was torn down. Are you in process of getting a new building up?
That's a long one. Yeah, so the, the hope is, um, to at some point get a. That's a long one, yeah, so the, the hope is, um, to at some point get a building, which would be a, a huge thing, but, I mean, honestly, it's, we can barely get a pump right now, so, um, long-term goal, yes.
Okay, but it's not happening this year.
No.
Um, and as far as the piping, you only replaced what was above the ground, you didn't take up all the concrete around the pool, replaced those lines?
Yes, we did.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, because when they tore the building down, all that concrete was like crumbled, so we literally, we tied right into the edge of the pool.
That is your letter, says that, um, to replace it would require demolition of the existing concrete apron.
What's that, the piping?
Yeah, that's your letter that you just submitted, yes. So, um, I thought you only replaced everything above the ground because you couldn't get at everything underground.
Yeah, so we were able to actually access right up to the, at the, edge of the pool.
Oh, gotcha, um, and yes, I know piping had to be bigger before you could get that new pump, because if piping's too small, you'd just, it would just be too much effort, um, to push it through those lines, so, um, I get that. Um, based on the loads that they've had in the thirty-three, which has been what the waiver has been for years, the pool has been well maintained and I don't have any issue with it. I know the previous boards seemed to be like, alright, why do we keep granting this waiver every year, can't we get the specs? But they, this is a catch-22, they were closed for a couple of years, they gotta get membership up to get money in, so that they can do the improvements to get more people in, so it's, um, they, they maintain it very well, so I'm okay with the waiver for another year, um, and hopefully, we can get more membership in that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, you know, some certified pools, is there any regulation on the pressure?
Uh, I don't remember if there is.
On the pressure of the lines, uh?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe so.
No, cuz it's, it's, I, I forget what type of, but it should handle anything that we put through it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if, if pressure's too low, if, if pump's bad, when the pump was new, see, an inch of flow line, even if pump's still adequate, well, it's still working properly, you could put a bigger line, your pressures would drop.
Yeah, so we, we operated with those new lines as of last year, and it, it worked fine throughout the year.
So, this isn't a press, a function of pressure, it's a function of how many hours it takes for you to rotate all the water in that pool. So every eight hours you're supposed to, every drop of water is supposed to be exceded.
Circle, circle.
Um, they're at like eleven hours or something like that.
Yeah, eleven to five, I suppose.
Yeah, so, the pressure is irrelevant, it's just how fast, you could put in a fish pump if you wanted to, but it would just take you.
Yeah, the increase in the size of the line should decrease the overall pressure on the pump, but it's still gonna decrease the, the complete, it's still gonna keep the same overall.
Right.
Recirculation the same, I mean, it's, it, that's, the pressure of the pump, it shouldn't matter how much, how long it takes to recirculate, it's just how much water flows through the pump.
Yeah, and the filter, the filter is a limiting factor here, too.
Well, that was just gonna mention that, that, I think the filter is the big, uh, factor. Because if you can't, if you don't have a pressure to push it through, uh, sand, whatever you put a piping of there is not gonna matter.
Right.
That's, that's where your restriction is right from that pump.
So the pump, the pump isn't pulling enough water in, is what our understanding through the pool guy, who would that? He said the filter is, the, the actual filter's fine, it's a big enough filter, it's, we're changing the sand like every few years, will provide what we need, the pump is just not strong enough to pull enough water through it. So it's just the turnover rate, because it's like, I think it's a one and a half horse, he's suggesting probably two to two and a half or something like that.
Uh, when is the last time you had the pressure volume tested?
Uh, last year.
Last year.
Yeah.
They let me close today, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you get it done again this year?
What's that, to have it tested?
Yes.
Yeah, so once we get, like, once we get it up and running, uh, we'll have it tested right away.
Okay, can you send us that report?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, just, just before you make the motion, just to make sure that the motion includes limiting to an occupancy of thirty-three, if you're, if you're making a motion, approve it.
Is that your suggestion, thirty-three people?
Yes, well, that's what their calculations, based on the flow rate, so yes, and that's what they've had for the past.
Limiting occupants per, and time, given time at the same time, that's not.
Yeah, so that's when, when they talk about bathers, it's like.
Max bathers.
Mass bathers and sitting in the pool at one time would be thirty-three.
So I, um.
I'd like you to include in the motion that, once he gives us the report, if the thing is changing, goes below seventy, the business.
Well, we need to, so, it, it does matter, it needs to support the thirty-three occupants, so.
But, but if he hasn't tested and found out that the pump has more failure and now it's only one fifty, so, if it went from a hundred percent and now it's down to seventy, it didn't just go from a hundred to seventy, it's been wearing out and getting worse for us since time was off.
Right, but they're telling us right now that the, that, that last, the ninety, the state requires to a ninety-eight gallon per minute origin.
Yeah.
And you're operating at seventy percent of that, so I, whatever the math is, eighty gallons per minute, I, I can't do it in my head that quick, but, so as long as you're operating at those gallons per minute, we're fine.
Yeah.
Okay, I've looked it up.
Um. Um, so I make a motion to grant the waiver for pop squash pool usage, um, to limiting the occupants to thirty-three people at a time, um, at approximately seventy percent of the flow rate recommended through mass general law.
I second. Aye. Aye. There is.
Thanks so much, have a great day.
When you get it up and running.
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi. Okay, now. Those regulations on the animals, we did have it, right?
Mm-hmm.
So now we're at the health agent? Did we skip that work that, to go to pop squash?
Yeah, we just stopped at that to go to pop squash, we can go back to where we were.
What can we, what's?
The health agent job description.
Okay. Alright, I know you worked on that, it was a great thing.
Yeah, um, so this is just a very rough draft, um, we've been talking about this for quite some time now. Um, it was brought to my attention when I started on the board back in January, um, it's been mentioned at a bunch of meetings when, um, Ms. Melo was part of the board as well, um, it's just, um, it's not really changing anything, it's just really just to try to get, um, some structure built into the for the health, um, tightening some areas, defining some areas and working on some areas. Um, I met with Todd, um, briefly after a meeting, uh, and he kinda gave me a little bit of input. Um, he's been working with it the past board, the past, um, board selectman as well as past board health people, uh, members, sorry. Um, so he gave me some suggestions, I did a little bit of research, uh, I threw together a draft for, um, the, um, board of health inspector, uh, as well as the board of health manager position that we've been talking about, which I don't see that.
I printed it out, but it wasn't on the agenda, so I.
Uh, yeah, okay, that is my fault, um, so we'll just talk about that then. So I'm not gonna get into too much detail, just kinda wanna get a draft to you, um, as well as the other board member, other board of health employees to see if there's any more input on it, like I said, this is just a first round draft, um, I, I one hundred percent welcome any input, um, from people involved in this as well, um, and we can go from there.
Any, your best?
Yeah, uh, first sentence.
Since you're a member of the board of selectmen, yeah? I believe the board of health inspectors are appointed by the board of selectmen. I mean, it's recommended by the board of health, but appointed by the board of selectmen.
Do you wanna change that? I'm just kidding. See, this is why multiple I's come.
Right.
Obviously, the board of health inspector was reported to the board. Might be quite important for what's.
Well, same, there's probably some time that, that's like the board of selectmen doesn't appoint it, that I might have, uh, acquired it from.
That's okay, that's why it's a draft.
Right?
Todd, do you have any comments?
From the first sentence?
No.
I'd say I just got this, I'm only.
Yeah, I mean, I, I didn't get this out.
Only beginning of age two at the moment, so.
I didn't get this hour until like one o'clock today, uh, so, I mean, we can, we can continue to table this, I, I would like to keep this as an agenda and hold business agenda item going forward.
Yeah.
Um, so we can work on it, it's, I, I know it's not, um, I don't want it to be thrown out of that field, cuz it might be a few spelling errors in there, too.
Right.
Um, but, um, take some time, we can talk about the next meeting, but I just wanted to get out to people.
No, that's good, it gives time to restructure.
Yeah, it's one step towards restructuring, um, you know, I, I don't like the idea of not, and it's not against anyone, um, in this, in, that are part of our board or part of our department or anything, I just like the fact that we have extractations on, set on people's jobs, so they're not, um, you know.
Well, there's a little bit of order, um, at the department, and then it's a big step forward in the restructuring efforts for the board of health.
Okay, uh, was it, can you put that on the agenda?
Can you add the, um, manager position to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I don't think we have, do we have the vote?
No, I don't think so. No, cuz it's just an agenda item that stays on.
Okay.
Sorry.
Alright. Alright, we have the board of health restructuring posting latency, that we've already done that.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that, that has been done. Okay, the use of third-party inspectors inspections.
Some, there's some.
Yeah.
Back in the, that too.
Yeah. So Jim, these places that you've done for us?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in your packet, there's a proposal from, um, consultant that we used in years past. Uh, Mr. Bernard, he's a registered professional engineer, and, uh, in it, he provided, um, an updated services proposal that would include or encompasses pretty much everything that we would need from a consultant, including site inspections, plan reviews, appearing before the board if needed, et cetera, et cetera. In the packet, he included a copy, sample copy of how his invoice plan operates, and, um, samples of the letters that he provided to the board in years past, which I know is something that this board voted on in, in, in the past, that they wanted written, uh, documentation as to what the problems were with the plan when it was reviewed.
Yeah.
So this is something that Mr. Bernard already had done for us in the past.
Is this the same Mr. Bernard that was on the board?
Uh, no, no, but he, he did do consulting services for the board of health.
Yeah.
In the past. So, I know that we had this discussion, um, the board has asked me to, uh, provide something more than just, uh, words, so here you have uh, concrete estimates of what things would cost, uh, the expected turnaround time for the plan reviews with Mr. Bernard have always been less than a week, with, sometimes within a few days.
Okay.
So it's not like he had, uh, any of the plans for extended period of time. If there was a re-review required, the letter would accompany the plan. The applicant would be required to make the necessary adjustments or corrections, submit the review fee, and then would go back for subsequent approval by the consultant.
Now, did we get any, uh, any prices from anybody else?
No, this is the only one I, I searched, I did have verbal discussions, but this is the only one I submitted, submitted a bit of estimate. The verbal estimates that I got were unparled, but this one is, they were all about the same, almost like plumbers, they all speak the same voice.
Excuse me.
No, thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I, I would like to say that, you know, I know that the board has already voted to, uh, implement this.
Right.
I would recommend that if we do this, we look at the fee structure that's currently in the board, under the board of health, and make the adjustments that are needed to make sure that we're fully covering the costs.
Right.
Associated.
Well, that's one of my concerns, though.
Right, well, the fee structure we discussed would go, would we change our fee structure to just state that the fees are covered by the resident and it's at that cost?
I would recommend that, no, the way I would recommend it is that the fee structure be changed to include the cost and also some soft costs that are incurred by the department to process that application.
Okay.
Um, saying that just because that's how I operate my department and my department runs in the green just about every year. So I would recommend the same type of strategy. Having that, that fee structure that way, the person who needs the service actually pays for the service as opposed to you paying for someone else's subject plan review. That's, it, it seems simple, but it's important.
But it'll be the same fee, wh- once we adjust those fees, it'll be the same fee, whether we have a third party or not.
That is correct.
Or I'll take it to. And I could all, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, that'll help us.
Okay, then, so we'll just, um.
Now, well, one question I have to. When we collect that money, if, if, in my understanding, everything that we collect, we have to give to the general fund.
That is correct, right now, the way the fee structures are set up in, um, all of the departments is that it's a local receipt, meaning that's a local revenue that goes to the general fund. There's no funds that stay, that I'm aware of, within the department that collects the fee. So, if that's something that the board wanted to do, that's called a revolving fund, that needs to be established for the town meeting.
Right.
That's my office.
But, if, if we charge to include that, and then we have to pay the third party, we're giving all that money that we added to the general fund and it's gonna have a live budget to pay for.
Right, but when you go to finance committee in the board of selectmen to set up your budget during the budgeting process, the presentation would include the fact that my operating budget is here, and here's the revenue that we're taking to offset the operating budget. And that, that has, has, I mean, it's simple dollars and cents, it works.
Okay.
I understand your concern and I understand your question, I've just never seen local receipts go into a revolving fund where a, a, a board or a committee would just keep rolling things over. Because revolving funds, if you run them in the green, will eventually accumulate a balance, and then you're limited with what you can do with the monies in that revolving fund. And, and that's why it goes to town meeting, cuz all that money has to be established, or, or the use of that money has to be established.
Even those funds, if you're gonna spend it out of that account for somebody else, needs to be approved at town meeting. So it's similar to like enterprise funds for animal.
Right, so I understand your concern, it's a valid question, um, but I think, in the interest of, of, um, the way things operate and simplicity, if you cover your costs, or at least attempt to cover your costs, and you go to the administration and to the townspeople with a budget that says, we offset the budget by X amount, therefore, your tax dollars shouldn't be used to operate this portion of our department, it, it's truthful and it's, and it's, and it wa, it bears weight with the, with the taxpayer.
Right, now, I know you work for the budget wars, morus basically, uh, is that in that, uh, the spectrum?
We currently don't operate in the green, we currently operate in the red, so our local receipts need to be posted to try to operate in a manner that taxpayers are not burdened with the cost that it takes to do the plan reviews, to do the inspections, et cetera, et cetera. All that has to have a wholesome look to make sure that we try to restructure everything accordingly, to make sure that our goal is to try and get it self-supported.
If my only concern is that if, uh, we don't have, we don't have enough of the budget and we run out of money in the middle of the year, then what do we do?
So it's happened to me in my office where I have an exceptionally busy year, and I go to the finance committee and say, I need X amount of dollars cuz I ran short. However, if you look at my local receipts, my local receipts show you that my permit count has, has skyrocketed, and here's the amount of money that were brought in based on the inspections that I had to do. So it, so it, you know, anyone with a finance background, especially the finance, we would understand, okay, you had an explosion in permit requests, therefore, the inspections coincide with that, so your local receipts have a spike, of course, you need more money to operate the department, but you brought in the money to do that.
Can we go to finance committee at any time?
No, you cannot, you have to either, um, talk with the account to deficit spend, which is allowed under certain circumstances, um, or do a reserve fund transfer, which can be done mid-year, or end-of-year transfer, which can only be done at the end of the fiscal year like now. So there are options on the table to help if, if that happens. I've only had that happen once in the twelve or thirteen years I've been here, I have a pretty good idea of how things work based on the market. I have a pretty good idea of how things work based on the market and the economy. Um, so it, it, it's, it's something that I think we can figure out.
Okay, so now if we approve this, this is not approved until just this one person. This is proven.
We don't need to approve this. This is just, we requested the numbers, so this isn't, we're not making a motion approving anything of this. This was, this has been approved for third-party consultants for inspections for a long time. This is just defining what the cost is and, and who would be doing it.
Okay, right, right.
Thank you for the words.
No problem. And if you'd like to, um, we're already in May. Um, you know, we can start to look at the local receipts, look at the costs, the, the, um, fee structure that we have, and, and start to address that.
Well, we need to evaluate our fee structure anyways to go with the permits online, which we need to be reevaluating.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's a great point, actually. I would recommend we do that all collectively so that we're only doing it once.
Right.
So this is gonna be a process. Um, you know, we might not fully realize the increased local receipts until October, once it's implemented. But at least we, we're taking care of the taxpayer and, and, and the people who need the service from the department.
Okay. Alright, well, thank you. To move the monthly meeting to Tuesdays. What are the, you guys have a vote for us?
The first Tuesday of the month would be anytime available at the old town hall. The third Tuesday of the month, we would have to be done by 7:00 PM. If we started at 4:30, I can't imagine this going longer than after 7:00, so. Todd, I have some concerns about the first week of the month. I think sometimes that gets a little.
No, just the calendar, sometimes you turn the calendar and you see, oh, I get a meeting tomorrow. So I know some of us have rolling calendars and some people flip it so that if May 1st is the first Monday, Tuesday of the month, like it's, I've never liked the first Monday of the month, like or Tuesday, but that's just a personal thing.
What time do you guys stop working on Tuesdays?
4:30.
Is that going to be in the years?
Can you get that back, 4:30?
Yeah. I thought it was 5:30, but.
5:30 is on Wednesdays.
Does, Jim, does that have to stay 5:30 on Wednesdays?
I'm sorry?
Does 5:30 have to stay on Wednesdays?
The town hall is open till 5:30 on Wednesdays.
General, so. Well, we can't change it so that the health department closes, or it stays open till 5:30 on Tuesdays?
Uh, that would have to be, that's actually bogged into the clerical union, so that would take, uh, a lot.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, third Tuesday, if we do 4:30, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry.
The only other thing would be if we know that the board of health will be closed at 4:30 on Wednesday on this particular day, we could maybe work something out where the building and body office manager would cover the office for that one hour.
No, I don't want to give meetings anymore. We can just do 4:30 on Tuesday. I, I'd ask to move it to Tuesdays just because my job with Wednesdays was tough.
Okay.
So, um, we can do the third Tuesday at 4:30 if that's fine with everybody.
I'm agreeable for everyone.
With a seven o'clock stop?
Oh, definitely. I don't think like a five o'clock stop.
I think once you get through the next couple, three meetings, meeting days will be much smaller.
God, I hope so.
Hopefully.
Um, yeah, so I'm okay with the third Tuesday of the month, that's fine. Um, Todd, is that okay with you?
Yep, it works for me.
Okay, and 4:30 is okay with you?
Tuesday.
Okay, I'm sure. I'm okay with you? Make the motion? You?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to move the monthly meeting to the third Tuesday of the month at 4:30.
I'll send it. Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Of this. Okay, next. Vote for the department head to the board of health.
One question before you move on, just for clarity. You just voted to move the board of health regular meeting to the third Tuesday.
Starting.
Starting.
Starting what?
Good call.
Starting the next meeting.
Uh, standby. June, third Tuesday, um, right, because the third Tuesday of May would be the 20, next Tuesday. Uh, starting June 20th. 20th to 23rd at 4:30.
I'd hate to be sitting here all over.
As soon as you started saying it, I'm like, it's a valid point, I know exactly what he's gonna say. Um, so June 20th will be, um, June 20th, 2023 at 4:30 PM will be our next meeting. Um, and then it will be.
At the old town hall.
At the old town hall. It's so big a crowd there. You have so much on camera there.
Right.
And then we'll go to every third Tuesday from there.
Thank you.
Okay. That's up.
Thanks.
Next is to vote for the department head for board health. Chairman used to pull a pot, but now we told him to pull it off.
Okay, so the chairman would fall under the board of health's department head as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We both, uh, make a motion for that.
Sure, make a motion to make the chairman the department head.
Chairman was said to vote.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, this, okay. Moving along. I just have a question because I've been part of this board out for 12 years, I've never seen a vote taken. Can you ask why? Vote, can I ask why? What made you be taken? What was it?
Uh, I was told by Leanne that it should be voted on. That it should be voted on.
It never had to before.
Right.
And it always went by past practice.
Right.
Until I could see.
Oh.
I mean, Tom Byas, he acted as it.
Right.
And so did Barbara, Cole.
Okay.
As soon as I came on board, they said they didn't get a vote.
You're special.
I guess I am.
Okay.
I left in and they only left it in.
So now it's official.
Yep, okay. Okay, complaints?
We have to order another complaint, you two. Chairman and then one for.
I was gonna say chairman, say, say one. Alright, moving on. Complaints, we got a trash bag. Trash bag, we have, you know, looking behind, have talked about that. And we don't get a lot of complaints out of the thousands of bags that we do sell.
Since I've been here, we've done four.
And as Elizabeth pointed out.
Four complaints we've done since I've been here.
Same thing?
Problems we've had.
There was, I'm gonna say there was a batch that I went through my house that we, I had problems with, but then it was gone. It must have been just a batch that came in, that went off to whatever stores it was, you got them from. And those were bad, since then I haven't had a problem, and I had before that. It was just, must have been a batch of that.
Yeah, so roughly around the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, did you get every hundred?
No.
You sure brought it?
Right.
You wanna give it to me?
Yeah, do we have a process like, can we bring them?
I told them to bring their bags in, some, one person said they had already used them, they just not at the bottom. And I believe they did bring them in, and I checked the bags and they didn't seem to have a hole at the bottom. But I didn't wait on them either, so.
As Elizabeth pointed out, uh, you know, sometimes people want us, okay, put in that stuff as much possible. Then it's so heavy with the kitchen carrier, so they're dragging down the dining room. You don't try to fill them to the top?
No, I'm trying to get everything.
I'm trying to get everything I have in there.
And, and this is just my opinion. Those bags are made so that the trash picker knows that they've been touched. A lot of people use a real trash bag, but they're all covered.
Yeah, so I had to throw my trash bags in there before it was on.
Right, so now you get double protection. The point we have with the problem was people have just used just that pack and not put them on that.
Well, this woman said she puts 13 gallon kitchen bags into the dining bags.
And the kitchen bags are fine?
No, that's, that's a bank that was splitting.
She was putting bags in bags.
Yeah.
I mean, it just could have been a bad batch. I, as long as the, as long as the people are, that are complaining and are having to complain addressed with replacement or however we go about it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it becomes more of an issue, then we should talk to the vendor, but if it's only four complaints and.
I did start looking into it, then we sidetracked on some of the other stuff, but I'll get back on that on.
Yeah, I mean, as long as they're fine, they're fine.
See if we can find a vendor. How far away are we from needing dollar bills?
It'll be July when we place an order. That's part of the reason I wanted it in front of this board is we're gonna be placing a $30,000 order for trash bags.
Right.
Um, we've had the problem in the past with bags splitting. And we've switched vendors and then we've switched how the bags are made and that kind of thing to get them. And we have far, far, far less complaints. We used to get a complaint a week with the old vendor. So now the seam, the glued seams are on the bottom instead of the sides, they used to be on the sides and most split much easier. So it's coming up that we're gonna be having to do it. And so what we usually do is we ask vendors to send us their bags so we can test them out before we, um, actually hire them.
Okay.
So, um, and we've got a ton of information on it, just want everybody to be aware. It, and to the people out there, if they have a problem, let us know. Because if they have a problem, we need to get a new vendor or make them switch the bag or something different.
Now, if this come, these complaints come through and they're actually tearing, is the vendor, like, replacing the, the rolls? Or is that something that we?
We did have, at one point in the past, they did replace like a pallet workforce because it was their fault. Um, but, um, again, when you get one person complain about the roll, we just switch, swap out the roll. If it becomes more than that, then we have a conversation. But again, the five years I've been here, we switched very quickly to this Mansfield paper that we use them now, and we've had almost no complaints.
Now, you've got different bags from different vendors. Alright, I'll get your line of information from them, so we can move on to that. Mr. Chair. So, do you want me to call Mr. Chair or the department head? Anything you want.
Before you go on, did we lose video?
Uh, I don't know. This is recording.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's recorded.
I just wanna make sure I can do that.
I think it's only if somebody pops it on Zoom, then we'll see the face.
Well, it should be our faces we're seeing.
It should be us, so the camera's not working, I don't think.
Oh, because the videos go to the left side.
Oh, stopped video.
Stopped. No, it didn't stop recording, it just stopped video, so you still, you still have all the video.
Alright, next.
It asked a question. That wasn't my question.
I'm sorry.
Um, we've had these bags since last July, presumably or thereabouts, correct?
Thereabouts.
So besides the four that we've had recently, have we had any other complaints? So then, um, Mrs. Berry's probably right, there's probably an isolated incident. But for, for, again, for clarity, if someone has a concern, what is the procedure for replacing bags right now? Are we giving them new bags? Do we go back to the vendor? Is there a trigger for that?
So that's, so that's what I was trying to.
Right.
Kind of add, so like if process now is they, if they call, you just replace the roll, right? They bring in their roll and you give. Now that roll that they give you, does it go back to the?
So if, if it's one roll, we'll just hold on to it. Um, but if it becomes other people, then we send those, like one bag off each roll back to the vendor and say, this is the problem we're having, and then see what they do to. But again, we haven't had to do that with Mansfield Paper, so.
How many bags do we have left already now?
Uh, I don't know, it's off the top of my head.
It's quite a few cases left.
Yeah.
Well, we'll make it to July, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, past July.
Yes.
Well, past July.
Um, but I forget whether it's 80 cases is small and 400 large, like I don't remember the exact number, but I don't.
We should talk about that. What, what do you think, should we have two different size bags or just one size? I, people buy both sizes.
Two different sizes.
We, we sell all of them.
Yeah.
Only because, I mean, I use both depending on what trash barrel I'm using.
Okay.
Um, but your elderly and your older people in town cannot.
Pick up that big bag.
They're gonna waste a big bag because they're not gonna fill it because they can't carry it with everything that's in it. Because I can put four 13 gallon bags in there and carry it, or one big bag in a, a big bag. Small bags, put a 13 gallon bag in there. But your elderly people aren't gonna be able to carry the big bags and they're gonna waste a lot of money because they're only gonna be able to put one bag in there.
Yeah, but personally, I don't even use the kitchen bag, I just use the town bag and then tie it up.
Right.
But I don't, these mine are at the curtain on the Berkeley suite road and, and right into the dumpster, so it's not like it's up there for everybody to see. Yeah, we don't have trash pickups, you gotta drive to the transfer station and throw it in a, like a roll off.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So the small bags fit right in the trash barrel?
Yes.
That'd be a great concept. Should try that.
So now you don't have to buy two bags.
Right.
Okay.
No, as long as, I mean, as long as the complaints are being addressed and if it's a continuous issue, it, it needs to be addressed with the manufacturer.
Right.
And.
They've been very responsive to us in the past, but again, like say we haven't had a lot of complaints about this vendor, the previous vendor we did.
Okay, so we're gonna need to hold them on, right? Okay, now, next, Boy Scouts of America, waiver fee.
Uh, you skipped D.
Excuse me?
You skipped D.
Okay. Alright, alright. Just 'cause I had E checked off, so I skipped that. Okay, open meeting law complaint from Patrick Higgins. I know the information was not proper, but it was data violation. He was the chairman. Patrick, I think he was taking time to put this letter together and send out. He was, it was all.
Yeah, um, so on April 13th, we received a open meeting law violation complaint from Patrick Higgins addressing the fact that, um, we took too long to approve our meeting minutes. We threw investigating the complaint, it was the date of alleged violation is incorrect, the specific chairman is incorrect. Um, so I addressed that in our letter back to Patrick Higgins that, um, after investigating the complaint filed by your office, um, it was found that your complaint was not accurate, um, he referenced the wrong date of date, I apologize, referenced the wrong date. Um, and they referenced the wrong chairperson that actually, um, called for a vote on the meeting minutes. Uh, however, um, if he was referring to the meeting on April 12th, there were meeting minutes that were, um, voted on too late, which is technically an open meeting law violation. However, Mass General Law, 940, Section 29, um, point 11, dash 2 states that we can also, um, approve minutes within a timely manner. Uh, I, I believe that the timely manner was something that we needed to take advantage of, seeing as though those minutes were taken during a time where we didn't have an office manager, um, and we were in a transition as a board. So Elizabeth has been overwhelmed with a lot of stuff, working through a backlog. Um, and I, I think that approving the minutes later than not approving them at all is better for the people that, um, live in this town, the people that, um, we answer to. Um, I believe they need this information posted, so I'd rather post it late while we're transitioning our board than never. Um, so that was, um, how I strongly felt is that we, we did it to benefit the people that live in town, that pay the taxes in town, that we answer to in town. And I, I thank him for diligently reviewing our meetings. However, that's where I felt it was. So I wrote up a letter, it's in there, um, so you can have Elizabeth put it on. Letter, I think it's like a word, my other one. Um, and we can't just email it, I, I can show my email in the back there if you want. Do that for me, and that's my idea. Maybe email it back.
You think I should email to him, say, you addressed it to the chairman?
If you'd like, sure.
Okay, was it?
Yeah.
Get a motion to approve this letter, to send?
Yeah, so I make a motion, we approve this letter, um, Elizabeth will take it and review it, um, and we'll send it off to Patrick Higgins and Associates with the both board members signing it. And the chairperson as well, and the department head as well.
I second that.
Uh, aye.
Aye, carries. Okay. Next, I do the Boy Scouts. Alright, so 245G, uh, Boy Scouts, DSA, also known as Boy Scouts of America, which is a nonprofit organization, due to the fact that we have the 35 gallon feed wave on a separate food established program to which has been submitted, um, to, you know, to serve, sell drinks that ideally chicken bound in front of us. A separate application will be submitted by. A separate application will be submitted by Taz barbecue approved, so this is not consideration of waiver for Taz, right?
So we move for the Boy Scouts, all the Scouts.
Taz is gonna be submitted on behalf of the Boy Scouts.
Yeah, Taz is submitting a different application, the Boy Scouts is just serving drinks. They have cooler with drinks, they're not even doing food.
So they're asking us to.
To waive the.
Waive both fees?
No, just their fee, which they get a discount because nonprofit, they're only pay seventeen dollars versus thirty-five. So for us to send an agent out there, give them an inspection, we're losing money.
Right.
Because they're only giving them seventeen, and we're sending somebody out there for forty dollars an hour.
Right.
We lose.
And we need to adjust those fees too, because we're losing on our revenue. All right.
I make a motion to approve the request from two forty-five G for their drink waiver for their thirty-five dollar fee for their, um, barbecue.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Aye, carries. Conservation Commission request for septic communication. Is there anybody here from Conservation, excuse me, I may be out?
They did submit a letter.
No, I don't, but, uh, I didn't, I was wondering if there's anybody here that, uh, to represent that, you know, everybody else that's come in, but we, this is nothing else, they come in, we'll discuss it. So I would like to obtain a motion that we table it until we can bring them in, and then we can discuss it.
Sure, I, yeah, I mean, I had questions on it because.
I mean, you have no discussion, I don't have no discussion.
No, I just, I had questions on it, because there's no, I, I, we mentioned it at two meetings ago. Um, if, if there's anything legally that prevents permits from moving forward, uh, is there a requirement for conservation? Um, we're told that the requirement is based on the builder, not necessarily the permit, correct?
Like, they have. Hold, hold on, you're mixing up building permits and septic permits.
Right.
So septic permit, um, we can hold up a permit if we, we want, um, whereas building department can't.
He can hold up a plant or anything.
No, I don't mean like that, I'm sorry, please.
Well, you don't.
Um, so if we wanted to have Conservation sign off on it, we could.
Okay.
If we wanted the building department to sign off on it, we could.
Historically, have we done that, though?
Well, he's saying we did, it wasn't since I've been here, they sign off on the perk tests, and what's been happening is, has been a few where I've signed up, they sign up on the perk test, then we do the, septic repair plan comes in and the conservation doesn't see the plan. And so that's what they're asking for, is they wanna see the plan before it gets.
Right, but they, in their letter, I believe, they referenced in his, historically, the Board of Health has done that.
Well, that was before my time, so.
Okay, how long have you been here?
Five years.
Okay. Jim?
Yep, if we can have a discussion, I have something.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Let's discuss it, and then, I mean, we can always table it if we wanna hear answers to this, but.
So I don't believe the Board of Health has the right to hold up a permit for conservation review, at least in part. This is a copy of the Town of Dayton's general bylaws, it's dated March seventh, twenty twenty-three, which is the most recent version. On page twenty-one is actually the conservation bylaw. Section seven, which requires, which is on setbacks, which setbacks is directly referenced in the letter from the Conservation Commission. It says, A, no subsurface sewage disposal system will be permitted within the one hundred foot buffer zone of any wetland or within two hundred feet of any perennial stream, as shown on the USGS map nineteen eighty-five or later, period. This setback will not be required for the renovation or replacement, but is required for substantial lodging or a septic system construction prior to the effective date of this bylaw. Effective date of this bylaw is September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. So what that means is that if someone comes in for a septic repair, which is the majority of the septic plants we approve in this department, they are not subject to the setback requirements, meaning they do not need to have conservation involved. So I find it very odd and concerning that the Board, the Conservation Commission presented a letter to you in complete contradiction to its bylaw. Their letter states they want, in years past, all its health required Conservation Commission members to visit sites prior to issuing a permit to determine the site at existing wetland resource areas, and the septic site met all the Wetland Act and Dayton Wetland bylaw, which I just read to you, septic setback requirements. Yet the bylaw specifically exempts repairs from meeting those requirements for obvious reasons, because you cannot stop someone from replacing a septic system on a house that's already constructed. That's public health risk. That's why that language is in there.
Also, the bylaw that you just read, that says that going up will be a map. Now, their letter says they're gonna go up of them coming out.
That is correct.
So what they're asking us for is going against their bylaw.
Exactly. Which, you know, I, I don't have any problem with another department's jurisdiction or what they oversee. We're all here, supposed to be on the same team, but I do have a problem with is a board committee overreaching their authority. And to me, and I wish they were here tonight, because I would love to discuss this.
Well, that's why I was asking.
To me, the letter that you received is an overreach of their authority because it contradicts the bylaw for which they, they're governed by. So I feel that it's, it's, it's an unwarranted request, and I don't think this board has the authority to go on anything that would be in contradiction to a bylaw.
Right. Um, do you have anything else to add, or?
We have a discussion, how we want to deal with this?
Uh, I just make a motion that we, we send a letter back to the Conservation Commission, saying that we'll gladly discuss it with them if they would like to show up to one of our meetings. Um, we can identify the dates and times of our meetings if they would like to show up. I, I don't, I reviewed their videos before I came to the meeting. Um, it was a five-second discussion on it, and then they moved on. Um, so they never got into great detail, they never got into significant discussion on it. Um, the conservation agent asked this letter be written and sent to us, um, and they voted on it, and the letter is here, and there's nobody to represent them. Um, so I, I make a motion that we write a letter back to them, saying that we will discuss their letter that they sent to us if they care to show up to the meeting.
Now, what if we, what if the letter also, uh, it's contradictory, legal matters?
If, yeah, if you wanna add that to that, then that's fine with me. I just honestly think that letter should just go back to them, saying we, there are questions that are unanswered, and if you would clarify it, we would appreciate it in person.
And we leave it at that?
Yeah, I mean, if they, they can read the minutes, they can watch the videos, and they can come with their answers if they want, but I just, I don't, I don't find it appropriate to send a letter, and then everybody else that has sent a letter, um, has either provided all of the information or they showed up to the meeting.
Right.
So, um, yeah, I mean, let's, if you wanna draft it, or?
Go ahead. Is there a lot, a lot of? Okay, so that's your motion?
Yeah, so I make a motion that we reply to their letter requesting their presence.
I'll second. Vote?
Aye.
Aye, carries. Any other items? Now, it is only to stay with the forty-four, forty dollars, I don't know everybody, anybody else? Any?
No.
Okay. Any public info? Any correspondence?
Yes. So the Department of Public Health sends out a consumer advisory to discard mung bean sprouts from Chang Farm, specifically the ten-pound bulk bags and the twelve-ounce retail bags with a sell-by date of May seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Are you lost near area on that?
It's a food recall.
Oh, okay.
So we get these every now and then, and, um, we're supposed to announce them when we get them.
Okay.
So we don't, it's not, it's been a while since we had one. Uh, we also heard from Bristol County Mosquito Control, they want to let us know that they are preparing for the start of adulta sighting season. The decision to make custom site applications are part of an integrated customer management plan, and many factors are considered. Uh, they will begin taking residential spray requests for adulta sighting beginning Tuesday, May thirtieth. We hope to begin actual applications June fifth between the hours of two A M and sunrise. Temperatures need to be above fifty-five degrees during those hours, so delays in June are very common. To make a request, you, you can call the phone number five zero eight eight two three five two five three. Um, we'll be putting this up on our website, so people will see the information.
Now, they only spray on the street, right?
Yes.
What about people that have a house, a hundred feet back?
They have to hire a private company or do something else, so they will not come onto private property anymore.
No.
No. And then the last thing is, this is just the, um, we get it monthly, um, it's just a newsletter to share when you can read it and give it to the other one. I'm already going to, that's it for the Fox One of the night, uh.
All right, any other, uh, motion to approve minutes?
Um, yeah, we just do them individually, don't we? We, we did that last month.
No, that's what we did in all those packages.
No, you have to read everything all along.
Yes.
Uh, so I make a motion to approve the minutes from April twelfth, meeting two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye, carries.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April fourth, twenty.
Twenty, that's the one we have to postpone?
Three, you have to table that, yes. Uh, so I make a motion to table the minutes from April fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, and I make a motion to approve the January twelfth, twenty twenty-three joint meeting with the Board of Selectment Minutes, um, with the same understanding, um, of the Open Meeting Law nine forty, twenty-nine point eleven dash two, that, um, they are, um, being approved in a timely manner due to the, um, restructuring of the Board of Health.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye, carries. Any motion for June?
I make a motion, would you?
Second.
Six fifty-eight. Sorry. That's the time.
Second.
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 I, I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is six fifty-seven, it's over here, Jen.
See, they can get it done by seven.
Yeah.